Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome. Delighted to have you here this morning as I call to order the first of three Polley County Board of Commissioners' public hearings for millage rate. For the archives, this is July 23rd, and it's 9:00 a.m. I'd like for all of us to stand. It's our tradition for prayer and salute to the flag. Gracious God, we're so thankful for a new day. Let us bow unto before You, seeking in wisdom that the psalmist reminds us, Your ways are higher than our ways, Your thoughts are higher than our thoughts, and we would seek to achieve a higher level of working together, planning, and decision-making. So we ask that you be a part of that this morning. We're so grateful for our marshal and our first responders in the county and all our staff that just contribute so much to the well-being of Polley County. So we're proud of these things, and personally, Jesus, we miss every word.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, in this one with liberty and justice for all.
We have no minutes. Under new business, this gathering is to discuss the millage rate tax increase. We've called a public hearing to order already, and we'll ask Ms. Pollard if she will give us an introduction, kind of a review, since this is a one-time-a-year event and challenge, also a foundation from which we can build and make decisions we need to make on the budget. Thank you, Tabitha.
Thank you. I'm going to go just a minute and send you that off screen. It's not online, so...
Sorry, y'all.
This is the first of three public hearings for the millage rate. I feel like we've done this over and over again because we've tried to include citizens over the past few months in the process of preparing the millage rate, setting the millage rate, and preparing the budget. So we'll get started with the official ones. We will have one today, this morning at 9:00. We'll have another at 6:00, and we'll have another on August 13th at 9:00. The reason we have public hearings for the millage rate is there's taxpayer bill rights that Georgia said a couple of years ago, or '99, so it was several years ago. And basically what they said is if the properties are reassessed, and that reassessment comes back at a higher value, then the commission has to roll millage rate back as if that reassessment did not occur, or they have to advertise a tax increase. And so if last year our millage rate was 6.079, and if our assessments came in at about 7% higher than they did the assessed values last year, which means if you're going to keep a 6.079 or above that, you have to have a public hearing. If you don't, then you have to roll it back to something that would be comparable to last year's, and that would be 6.63 is the calculation for the rollback rate. So basically, you have your assessed value. Everybody should have gotten their assessment in the mail several weeks ago. I believe the deadline to appeal that assessed value occurred last week or the week before. That's consolidated into gross digest. Gross digest is 40% of value of property before any exemptions. Then you have your exemptions that are calculated into that, into your tax bill to get the amount due, and then you multiply what's left times the millage rate. And the millage rate is $1 per thousand of assessed values. So you have your assessed value multiplied by your millage rate equals the tax levy. Every year, we have to do a five-year history, so we show you what happens with the... to tell the public what happens with the gross digest and the exemptions as well. So the first part of this, you'll have real and personal. That's where your residence, your... you have commercial, industrial, all of that, all included in that category. And then you have your vehicles, timber, down to the gross digest, and that has continued to grow. You'll remember me several years ago in 2009, we started seeing a decline. From there, we went down quite a few years, and then we went, come back up. The past five years are showing some recovery from that. The rollback rate, I've already talked about that a little bit. That's basically to take the reassessment out of the equation. So the tax assessor reassesses property, then it comes to you. You have the... you are supposed to roll that back to take the reassessment out, or you advertise a tax increase. We did advertise a tax increase. We were working on a budget, and it's pretty hard to do it by June 1st to determine exactly where you need to be. So all of you have been actively working on the budget since June... since we started in March, actually, and we've been working actively on the budget and did not slow down. In June, we continued to work on the budget, and so we'll talk about that in a few minutes. But if, by law, if you advertise, if you have to advertise what you think you're going to approve, and you can't go beyond that. So if you decided to run these advertisements, and you were going to stay at 6.079, and you were working through the budget, and you couldn't get a budget to work for 6.079, you have to go back and start all over, start the process over. So we have advertised at 6.5, and all of you have been working to do something either at 6.5 or something less than 6.5 over the past month or so. So what happens? What's the value of the mill? How has that changed? 2010, this will give you the last 10 years. We have seen growth over, as you can see, in 2010, 2011, 2012, we were still seeing some decline. 2013, we started to see some recovery. The millage rate was adjusted, some during those years to offset some of that reduction in the assessed value. And then we reduced, since 2014, we've been reducing the millage rate to determine what that cost of services is. Your property value, property tax funds about 40% of your budget. So we have to determine what the cost of those services are in order to be able to set this millage rate. Again, this is just a picture of the same thing I just gave you. So what's the value of levy for each year? And that is taking the value of the mill. So your red line across the bottom is the value of the mill and how it's changed. And then if you multiply that by the millage rate, you get the levy, which is the top blue bars. Surrounding millage rates. I have to go back to 2018 because all county governments around us are doing the exact same thing we're doing here today. So if you look at my list of counties, Paulding was at 6.079 in 2018, 2.07 for debt, fires 3.1, and school was 18.879, giving a total of 30.128. One of the things that has been of interest over the past couple of years is our ratios from residential, between residential and commercial and industrial. And this updates just a little bit, but it's only a percent change everywhere. There's not a lot of change in any county, and that's including Paulding, which is mine. So what does this do to homeowner? What does this do to your property tax? If you have a... again, our gross digest, so everybody consolidated, increased by about 7.98%. Now, that doesn't mean that everyone, you went up 7.98%, some might have went up 10, some might have went up 15, some might have reduced. The average of that works out to be about 7.98%. So if you take a property value of $150,000, and you add the 7% value, increased value to 161, that increases your taxable value to 64 as opposed to 60. And this does not include exemptions because those are different for everybody. And your M&amp;O, which is what this hearing is about today, if you calculate it from the 6.079 of last year, was $364.74. And if that is approved at advertiser rate 6.5, we will have a bill of $419.41, which is a difference of $54.67. Debt is anticipated that it will increase from 2.07 to 2.2. That's primarily paid to debt. We talked about the jail and how that was voter-approved a couple of years ago. We didn't actually put that on the tax bill until we saw something coming out of the air known. And the first payment was made last year, but it's where... and we took that out of fund balance, and we're going to have to put that on the bill in the coming years to be able to make that payment. Fires 3.1, and the school board, they actually reduced their millage rate from 18.879. So if all of this is approved as presented, your overall tax bill would increase $163.33. And again, today's public hearing is M&amp;O. It's related to the $54. So where do my tax dollars go? This is hard to see, but the big volume is the school tax. So most of your tax dollars, 62% go to the school, 21% go to maintenance and operations, 7% go to bond or debt, and 10% go to fire. How are the maintenance and operations funds spent? We have 35% goes to public safety, and 23% is to public works. That's primarily DOT. Your public safety consists of your coroner, your sheriff, detention, marshal, animal control, and public works consists of DOT, recycling, fleet, so all our vehicles, then stormwater. And general government is 23%, and that's what it takes across all of these to make it work. So that's the commission, that's finance, it's human resources, it's our technology, public information, to list it, just to give you a few ideas of what's considered in those functions. And with that, if I've left anything out, feel free to ask questions if you think it's something that will help the public, and if not, we'll turn it over for public comment.
Questions, clarifications? Thank you for laying that foundation and giving us that review, Tabitha.
Good job, Tabitha. Thanks.
So at this time, I'd call on any citizens that would like to communicate with us their thoughts on the millage rate. Are there any citizens that would be wishing to speak at this time? I told everybody to come forward at once. I'll ask one more time, maybe the board is in clarification.
Okay, I will. I will. Hi, Sue Wilkins. I'm Brett. Tabitha, can you tell us how much the bond payments are for the airport authority and the IBA? Thank you.
The total debt for the county is at 11... I believe it's 11 million dollars.
Between the two of them?
No, between everything. That's this building, that's the jail, that's everything.
Okay.
I will look to give you... I've got a scenario that gives you details of that. I believe it's a little over 20 million. It's like 2.8 million for all of the... all of the debt between the airport and the IBA.
Okay. So what would our annual payments be for this budget, coming budget?
2.8 million.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was busy writing my information. Okay. And is the IBA being financed, this budget?
Yes, there is an amount in there for the IBA.
How much?
Well, there is not an amount in there for the IBA. There is an amount in everything.
And is there a chance that EDO will funnel money to the IBA?
I don't think that's...
Mr. Chairman, if I can answer that question. The EDO, it's got its own board. It is not a part of the county government. The county is considering entering into an economic services agreement with the EDO, but that ultimately would be a decision made by the EDO. Frankly, I'm personally not familiar with that.
Okay. We hope not. All right, thank you.
The IBA and the EDO are working very closely together, along with the Board of Commissioners, and the IBA actually had several, was to create several grants and incentives for businesses. It's not going to be the other way around if the IBA had an interest in assisting in economic development, organization, projects.
Okay, thank you.
Can you say a little bit about the bond rating? Since I was brought up, the bond rating for Polley County, which you and your county are very much responsible for.
Currently, Paulding County has double A rating. We are... we were upgraded a few years ago, and that was primarily the... that upgrade was as a result of the fund balance that we had in place. So the amount of the effort that had been made to balance budget on an annual basis with revenues and expenditures and not using the funds that you had, we're not spending from your savings, for lack of a better word.
I can hear you fine, but...
I'm trying my best.
I can hear. People hear her in the back, Ms. Debbie.
I'm old, so...
I'll be right back. So we currently have a double A rating. The highest you can have is a triple A rating. There are some ways to get there, but it's very difficult when you're primarily residential and you don't have a lot of commercial. There's a lot of services that are required for all of those residences, even though the citizens don't really... they sometimes realize that they are, but it has to be available to them if... for every residence that we have. The offset of that is favored when you have commercial or when you have something that's may bring value to the county that isn't absorbing as much of those revenues as a residency is. We, a couple of years ago, we were given an upgrade. That upgrade was primarily due to the fund balance level that Paulding County was at. We had come through the recession years and not used up our fund balance as many local governments had used around us. We had added to actually a little bit of that fund balance. And that happened because we reduced expenses and we increased revenues where we could. And as you saw, where we adjusted the millage rate to offset some of the reduction in value that was favored by the rating agencies in that they saw what the cost of general services were, and you were willing to increase revenues to be okay for those services.
Can you just underscore one more time that the reason we're not triple A is because we don't have the businesses that raise us to a level of that consideration?
I'm not going to say that is the only reason, but that is one of the largest reasons, is because we have a lot of service demand, and the more residents we have, the more service demands we have. As one goes up, the other goes up. There's a cost for those services.
I hope we'll have more participation tonight for 16, but I would like for you, if we could pull it back up, the slide that's surrounding digest comparisons.
Okay.
Here's another slide I'd like to see again, too, please. Talking about the assessment for homeowners to businesses and commercial. It showed homeowners at 8% versus the business, which is way higher than anybody else in the surrounding counties. And I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to understand that slide there and why we're so much higher than the surrounding counties for homeowners.
I believe you were talking about the same slide.
Okay, are we covered? Right there. Paulding County residential, 80%.
If the bullseye, the target doesn't jump off the page at you, you're not looking at it. And this is the challenge in Paulding County, and this is the challenge that the Board of Commissioners is trying to address on a day-to-day basis, and the IBA is trying to address. And the EDO, that's been restructured and reconstituted, new membership, the new budgetary considerations is being put in place. Actually, two of the post-commissioners are on that EDO board, and a new director will soon be hired. But that is the big problem in Polley County, is if you're going to get the services and you don't have the commercial industrial for which to draw that revenue stream, then you either go into services or you take it out of the other source, which is residential property tax, and... just a huge, huge challenge in Polley County.
So if I may, so what is the county doing to try to attract businesses or industrial to get more industrial and businesses in Polley County so the residents don't have to absorb so much of the cost?
Well, I just mentioned hiring an economic development director with connections and achievements are already done so that we can bring them on board and working with the IBA and the EDO board, with who that person will work for. And I want Brian or Sandy, they're both on the board. If you want to applaud what you're doing, or you'll be applauded.
Looking to, like I said, hire a new EDO director to go out and promote sale of Paulding County, working alongside with IBA, the county changer. Also, we're looking to streamline the process of business license, redo our zoning ordinance, making support attractive businesses in the metro London area along the... across the world. So, you know, we're doing some interviews, just trying to find the right director. You know, we're not selling, but just anybody who wants the best of the best, a seasoned professional coming in to have herself walk. You know, it's a slow process. I'd like to have been months ago, had someone already hired. Business government's sometimes a little slower than private sector, which I'm used to, so we're open to hiring, have someone by the end of August hired to just offer this.
Because as a homeowner, my property taxes gone up 63% the last seven years, just not including the increase that you're talking about for next year?
So can you...
Oh, of course.
That would be a long time.
No, 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 no. So my property taxes have gone up 63% the last seven years. I don't own a mansion. I own a house, probably worth $250,000. 63% is significant. That's almost $1,000 a year. So I work in public safety, so I understand the cost for public safety and the increase in population here in Paulding County is in the need of the extra officers and the jail. I do want to ask the, looking at the, when you did the bond that was voted on in 2016, did that not also include a budget for that, or is that just a bond? And was the budget, was the money that was going to come out of that, was that anticipated with the tax hike in 2019 in order to pay for that? Or was that included in the 2016 vote? When you voted to build that complex, was that not, was the taxes to pay for that not also voted on that, or is this an additional tax increase in order to pay for it?
That's a great question, and Tabitha can express it and describe it better than I can. I can give you an answer, but I'd rather she do it.
And you can stay up here and just have any other questions. The bond that was voted on was just to build the facility, so it did not include the operational cost. Yes, that operational cost was budgeted during that time. It was anticipated. That facility will open up in April of next year, and so we are planning to staff that facility, and the operations utilities that I think are going to be different from the facility that they're currently operating on will come online. So they're just now beginning to appear in our budget while they were planned at the time that the facility was being built.
So the budget increase that we got in 2016 in order to pay for the facility, we're getting additional budget increase?
You did get budget increase.
Now, the budget, excuse me, the tax increase that we got in 2016 when the county voted on it in the election?
That one, that doesn't actually, that is part of the... let me show you where... that is, the debt for that was, it was anticipated that it would go, there was a half a mill is the payments. So it's the payment for about half a mill.
So this increase in the budget is to pay for the other half?
No, it's, it was estimated that it would be a half. So value of the mill for, during that time, was about $4 million. So the debt on it was $2 million. So we paid that $2 million last year, and that it was anticipated that it would take a half a mill to get us there. But we're not, it's not going to take quite that much because we've had some growth in reassessments. So the, it's going, that's why the 2.2 is increasing from the 2.07. That's for the facility of the jail to be able to make those payments.
So the budget increase for this year is not, is not, oh, we're just not getting it?
You're just now getting it.
So then why do we, if this was...
Offset of that is favored when you have commercial or when you have something that's made bring value to the county that isn't absorbing as much of those revenues as, as a residency is. We, a couple of years ago, we were given an upgrade. That upgrade was primarily due to the fund balance level that Polk County was at. We had come through the recession years and not used up our fund balances, we, local governments had used around us. We had added to actually a little bit of that fund balance. And that happened because we reduced expenses and we increased revenues where we could. And as you saw, where we adjusted the millage rate to offset some of the reduction in value, that was favored by the rating agencies, and they, they saw what the cost of general services were, and we were willing to increase revenues to be okay for those services.
Just underscore one more time that the reason we're not triple A is because we don't have the businesses that raise us to a level of that consideration.
I'm not going to say that is the only reason, but that is one of the largest reasons, is because we have a lot of service demand, and the more residents we have, the more service demands we have, because one goes up, the other goes down. There's a cost for those services.
I hope we'll have more participation tonight at the sixteen, but I would like for you, if we could pull it back up, the slide that's surrounding digest comparisons.
Okay.
Here's another slide I'd like to see you get to, please. Talking about the, the assessment for homeowners to businesses and commercial. It showed homeowners at eighty percent, whereas the business, which is way higher than anybody else in the surrounding counties. And I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to understand that slide there and why we're so much higher than the surrounding counties.
I believe you're talking about the same slide.
Okay, are we covered? Right there. Polk County residential, eighty percent.
If, if the bullseye, the target doesn't jump off the page, I am not looking at it. This is the challenge in Polk County, and this is the challenge that the board commissioners is trying to address on a day-to-day basis, and the IBA is trying to address, and the EDO that's been restructured, reconstituted, new membership, the new budgetary considerations is being put in place. Actually, two of the post commissioners are on that EDO board, and a new director that will soon be hired. That is the big problem in Polk County, is if you're going to get the services and you don't have the commercial industrial for which to draw that revenue stream, then you either go into services or you take it out of the other source, which is residential property tax, and, just a huge, huge challenge in Polk County.
So, if I may, so what is the county doing to try to attract businesses or industrial to, to get more industrial and businesses in Polk County, so the residents don't have to absorb so much of the cost?
Well, I just mentioned hiring an economic development director with connections and achievements are already done, so that we can bring them on board and working with the IBA and the EDO board, with who that person will work for. And I want Brian or Sandy, they're both on the board. If you want to applaud what you're doing, or you'll be applauded.
Looking to, like I said, hire the EDO director to go out and promote the settlement of Polk County, work alongside with IBA, the county changer, to also, we're looking to streamline the process of business license, redo our zoning ordinance, and just make it more attractive to businesses in the metro London area, among the, across the world. So, you know, we're doing some interviews, just trying to find the right director, you know, we're not selling, see anybody who would do the best of the best, seasoned professional coming in to have a settlement. You know, it's a slow process, I'd like to, been months ago, had someone already hired. Business gimmicks sometimes a little slower than private sector, which I'm used to, so we're open to hiring, have someone by the end of August hired to, just to...
Because as a homeowner, my, my property taxes have gone up sixty-three percent the last seven years, just not including the increase that you're talking about for next year. Oh, of course.
What would be on that side?
No, 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 no. So my, my property taxes have gone up sixty-three percent the last seven years. I don't own a mansion, I own a house, probably worth two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Sixty-three percent is significant, that's almost a thousand dollars a year. So, I work in public safety, so I understand the cost for public safety and the increase in population here in Polk County, is in the, of the extra officers and the jail. I do want to ask the, looking at the, when you did the bond that was voted on in two thousand and sixteen, did that not also include a budget for that, or is that just a bond? And was the budget, was, was the money that was going to come out of that, was that anticipated with the tax hike in two thousand and nineteen in order to pay for that? Or was that included in the two thousand and sixteen vote? When you voted to build that complex, was that not, was the taxes to pay for that not also voted on that, or is this an additional tax increase in order to pay for it?
That's a great question, and Tabitha can express it, describe it better than I can. I can give you an answer, but I'd rather she do it.
And you can say it, Karen, just having other questions. The bond that was voted on was just to build the facility, so it did not include the operational cost. Yes, that operational cost was budgeted during that time. It was anticipated, it, that facility will open up in April of next year, and so we are planning to staff that facility, and the operations, utilities, everything that's going to be different from the facility that they're currently operating out of, will come online. So they're just now beginning to appear in our budget while they were planned at the time that the facility was being built.
So the budget increase that we got in two thousand and sixteen in order to pay for the facility, we're getting additional budget increase?
You didn't, you didn't give a budget increase.
Not a budget, excuse me, the, the tax increase that we got in two thousand and sixteen, when the county voted on it in the election?
That one, that doesn't actually, that is part of the, let me show you where, that, that is, the, the debt for that was, is anticipated that it would go, there was a half a mil is the payment, so it's, the payment's about half a mil.
So this, this, this increase in, in the budget is to pay for the other half?
No, it's, it was estimated that it would be a half, so value of the mil for, during that time was about four million dollars. So the debt on it was two million dollars. So we paid that two million dollars last year, and that, it was anticipated that it would take a half a mil to get us there. But we're not, it's not going to take quite that much because we've had some growth and reassessments. So the, it's going, that's why the two point two is increasing from the two point oh seven. That's for the facility of the, of the jail, to be able to make those payments.
So the budget increase for this year is not, is not, oh, we're just now getting...
You're just now getting it.
So then why do we, if, if this was already anticipated and voted on in two thousand and sixteen, why do we have to have public hearings on the increased budget?
Because that's the way the Georgia law...
Has it not?
Yeah, well, that's the way the Georgia law is written for the M and O. You don't have to have one word of debt. So if it was just going from the two point two to the two point oh seven, you would not have to have one.
So the vote in two thousand and sixteen was to put us in debt for the two thousand and sixteen?
Mr. Chairman, sir, sir, will let the finance director complete her findings?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Just, just for an orderly...
No, no, thank you.
The two thousand and sixteen vote put, was for seventy-seven million dollars, we borrowed seventy-two million dollars. That began to hit, we started making payments on that in twenty seventeen, we made a small one, twenty eighteen, we started making payments on that. We paid those from fund balance last year so that we wouldn't be increasing the tax bill without some, without the facility coming out of there. In the meantime, we've had growth over the budget. So instead of increasing half a mil for, to be able to make those payments, we're actually going to increase by point one five, something like that, to be able to make those payments. So you're just now seeing that increase this year. The M and O that we're here to talk about today, yes, includes the operating cost of the operations of that facility. We did not in two thousand and sixteen increase the cost for M and O to operate the facility.
It was just a building?
And it was just a building, and that's just hitting the bill this year. This M and O value does include an increase for the operations of the facility.
For the positions and just the overall operation of the facility?
Yes, yes, those were planned, but there was no need for us to incorporate that early on, knowing it was going to be an increased cost until we actually were going to incur this, and we might, we will incur this in the, in the twenty twenty calendar year, once the facility becomes operational.
Questions, comments from the board? Any other citizens wishing to speak?
Where do we stand on our general fund? General fund's been mentioned numerous times throughout this meeting. Where do we stand today on our general fund, and what is the anticipated balance this time next year of the general fund?
We are currently trying to close the year out, so these numbers are very preliminary, but currently, we have, you give a good explanation of this, I've got to give you more information that I think you probably want to hear today, but I can't tell you one thing, if I don't do all of it, it's going to be misunderstood. So we issue encumbrances for upcoming expenses, and at the end of the year, on June thirtieth, we attempt to close those out and charge those encumbrances to the appropriate year. We're not able to get all of those, if, if, if I issue an encumbrance and the work's not completed, then I don't owe that encumbrance until the following year. So we, what we'll do is we'll close that year out, roll those over to the next year. So if you have a budget, approved budget of seventy-two million this year for twenty twenty, the one we're talking about today, August thirteenth, let's say you adopt a budget of seventy-two million dollars. I'm going to have some outstanding encumbrances that aren't going to be completed, so I don't actually owe those, I've just issued funds to pay for those for next year. I have about eight million dollars of those this year. So if those were incurred, then you would not have any addition to fund balance. But because I'm going to roll those from one period, one year to the next, I'm going to add to fund balance this year about five million dollars, and then I'm going to move that five million dollars into my budget for next year, because that's when those, that's when we will complete those transactions, if that makes sense. So you will see, you do see a growth in fund balance this year. It's, for the most part, already obligated to, to something that we have, a lot of them are in asphalt and DOT and work that is being, being completed there, are the most expensive ones, but we have other encumbrances throughout the county as well. So I hope that answers your question. Now, the total of where we were last year in unassigned fund balance is, I will bring that to the next, to the public hearing at ten, to give you a for sure, but it's, it's fifty-five million dollars. So it's, is where it is currently. And there are, there is a use of fund balance budgeted in twenty twenty of about two million dollars. So if you, your exposure could be the five million that you're rolling from one year to the next, and the two million that you're likely to approve in the budget, would, could leave you in a reduction of fund balance of seven million dollars at the end of twenty twenty.
Seven million of fifty-five million?
Of the fifty-five, yes.
Fifteen percent. Thank you.
Would you also speak to what the board's policy is in reference to that fund balance amount? So we can't go below that?
Okay, on the fund balance, you have several different categories of fund balance. One's assigned, one's committed, one's, those are the ones we, and unreserved, those are the ones we can use. Last year, you had assigned and, for general fund, you had assigned and unreserved. Assigned means any of your obligations that you've already incurred, you have some expenses coming from, coming for capping the landfill, it's, it's used to plan for those kind of expenditures. And then your unassigned fund balance is what you have available to spend. So your fund balance policy says that if you drop below twenty-five percent of your annual expenditures, so if your annual expenditures are seventy-two million, then twenty-five percent of that number is required to be in your unreserved fund balance. It is, we've been very fortunate to not have to do this, but twenty-five percent doesn't get us from July one to operate budget until the taxes are collected in November. So you have more like a thirty-five percent time, portion of the year that is funded for your, with previous year's tax dollars. So we, we use our unassigned fund balance to fund that first thirty-five percent of the year, and then we collect it, and we'll end of the year with a, with, with that money being replenished. So we don't want to drop below that. If you do, you can't make payroll, you have to restrict how you, some of your spending, or you have to issue tax anticipation notes, which would be an interest cost to the county that we don't want to incur. It's unnecessary at this point. So basically, it's, you require twenty-five, our goal is to not drop below thirty-five. Now, this year, there was a policy passed previously that committed some of fund balance. So you're going to have about twenty million dollars of your unassigned fund balance is going to be committed, and that's in case of something comes up with either of these projects. So you have bond issued projects, ones with a res for, and ones with a jail. And what the board approved was, I believe, ten percent of those projects, of those amounts would be committed, so moved from unassigned, so it would be unavailable to spend, to a committed, until those projects are complete. So your unassigned fund balance is going to decrease pretty significantly this year in twenty nineteen. And your policy doesn't change, it's still twenty-five percent of the unassigned balance.
So I've got something to tell you, it's right around twenty V, and you would not like to go below that, we're sitting, in my view, healthy at fifty-five million.
That's correct.
So, any other questions?
Dave, I'll just add, as we talk about the importance of fund balance, and Tabitha alluded to it just specifically, I attended some of the town hall meetings that were in the western part of Cobb County, and said, votes them against, opposed to one. And I believe the number, don't quote me on, but I believe the number that they spend because they don't have the fund balance available to be able to fund government and payroll and what needs to happen. From the time, at the start of the fiscal year or two, taxes start coming in, they have to issue the, the tax anticipation notices, and the county, Cobb County, I believe it's about half a million dollars they pay every year because they don't have the funds to do that. Now, Cobb's bigger, and probably, we were in the same situation, we wouldn't have to borrow as much money. But it's worth, it's worth pointing out that healthy fund balance keeps us from incurring that expense. I think the, Tabitha said it's unnecessary, and it's only unnecessary because we've had policies in place that protect that fund balance so that we can continue to operate and not have to borrow some money to get through the first few months of the fiscal year. It's just, it's one of those things that I think is important, is a really good thing.
Thank you, thank you, Tabitha. And I'd really like to take this opportunity, this is the first meeting, but Tabitha and her team, and then our whole staff working with Tabitha and that team, do an exceptional job, and I'm very proud of them, thankful, grateful for them. At this time, I will close the public hearing for military, and that's the conclusion of our regular business for this meeting. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn.
Adjourned by Commissioner Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Caker. Always in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Stand adjourned.